So I call the meeting to order. Welcome to the informational meeting to discuss the items on which New Fane voters are being asked to vote tomorrow. My name is Deborah Luskin. It's my privilege to be your town moderator and the select board has asked me to moderate this evening's meeting. This is the first time New Fane voters have been asked to conduct all business by Australian ballot. And it's also the first time we're holding such a large informational meeting. So I'm asking everyone to please be patient with each other as we all learn how to navigate this remote meeting and the technology that some people may not be familiar with. But we're going to educate you if you don't know. So this meeting is being streamed live to Comcast on channel 1085 YouTube and Facebook at the Brattleboro Community TV. You can get to it by their website, which is brattlebrotv.org or brattleboro.tv. And the tonight's coverage is brought to you by these sponsors. I really want to take a moment to acknowledge Court Trobridge and all the staff at BCTV. They've been spectacular. They've set up this technology, trained us on it, and it's making this meeting possible. Nolan Edgar is directing tonight's broadcast with the help of Brian Bashaw. This wouldn't be happening without BCTV. So here's the first thing you can learn under reactions, you can hit applause, as I have just done in the corner. So thank you, BCTV. How to participate in tonight's meeting? Yeah, please, if you haven't already turned off your video and muted your microphone, please do so now. If you are joining by telephone, voice only, you can use star six to mute and unmute. Make sure your name is displayed correctly. This is being recorded and it's a public record. We need to know your name. So you can use the rename function under participants or hover over the blue square on your picture, which you probably can't see. So if you wish to speak tonight at any time, you need to use the raise hand function. And if you're joining by phone, that's star nine. And you should know that the chat is open, but it will not be monitored. So no one will see it. It won't be monitored for questions or comments on the agenda. That and if you want to participate, please use raise hand. I will call when you do raise your hand, I'll call your name. Or if you're joining by phone, I'll use the last four digits of your phone number to speak. You will then receive an invitation, a little, a little pop up invitation on your screen from BCTV. And they will invite you to turn on your video and unmute your microphone. So that's your cue that you get to talk. When you are live, please identify yourself and tell us the street that you live on, but not your house number. When you're done speaking, please stop your video and mute your microphone again. As each agenda item is completed, I will ask the director to lower all the hands and we will start the line again for the next question. So I will call on participants in the order in which they show up on my screen. So use your raise hand feature or star nine. And to keep things moving, I will allow people to speak once first. And after everybody who's wanted to speak once has done so, someone who wants to speak again may. But nobody can speak to one article more than twice. So the agenda for tonight's meeting is the warning, which you'll find on pages three through six of your town report. This wonderful town report, which I hope you all have in front of you. But I will read each article. The I want, I want to take a moment to acknowledge all the public servants who've helped bring this this town warning to you. You've got your select board members and your town employees and probably a lot of volunteers. So just you can find everybody's name inside your, all, all the town officers are listed inside your town report. This is sadly because of the pandemic, this is an informational meeting only. Members of the select board and staff, the town staff are here to answer your questions. But we cannot amend articles and we will not be voting on them today. For those who plan to vote in person or to drop off the ballots that they already have, you can do so tomorrow. Please note that the polls will open at nine AM at the New Brook Firehouse and they will close at seven PM. So don't show up at eight as has been published erroneously. Come at nine and make sure you get there before seven. So I'm hoping that everybody's got their Zoom instructions. I'll help you if you need them. But we're going to talk first because this is something we can't usually do at town meeting. But we can talk about Article One for that the shall the voters of the town of New Fane elect the following New Fane town officers as required by law. And I would invite anyone here who is running for office to make a brief statement if they so choose. I am not inviting campaign speeches from or endorsements. Just if there are people who are running for office who would like to introduce yourself to the people who are here, please raise your hands using the raise hand function. Well, doesn't seem like a really popular option. Let's move on to Article Two. And Nolan, you don't even have to lower anybody's hand. Article Two. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April? Late charge for interest being at the rate of point five percent per month for the current fiscal year and point seven five percent per month for each month thereafter until paid. Is there, does anyone have any questions about this or comments? Please use the raise hand function if you would like to speak. Not a very talkative group. Moving right along. Article Three. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize the treasurer to collect current taxes pursuant to thirty-two VSA subsection forty-seven ninety-one? Does anyone want to speak about that or ask questions? All right. We'll move on to Article Three. No, Article Four. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Are there any questions about that? It looks like Bucky Pelso would like to speak. So Bucky, you'll get an invitation from BCTV?
Just curious as to whether there are any properties pending for sale.
Could you just introduce yourself and the street you live on?
Bucky Pelso, Otis Lane.
Thank you. And who can, who's going to answer that question? Is that Shelley, I think?
So is, I don't know if there's actual properties that are being considered for sale. But Melissa, our delinquent tax collector would have a better idea.
Melissa, are you there?
Yeah, so I do have a few of them that will be going up this year for tax sale. We have not started the process yet because last year we could not do them due to COVID.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? So Article Five, we're moving right along. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize general fund expenditures for town and highway operating expenses of one million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, of which one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars shall be raised by taxes and three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty-seven by non-tax revenue? Is there any discussion about that? If you have a question or a comment, please raise your hand using the raise hand function or on your telephone, you can use star nine. Okay, hey, here we go. Article Six, shall the voters of the town of New Fane authorize capital fund expenditures of two hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, of which two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars shall be raised by taxes and three thousand by non-tax revenues? Is there any discussion or questions? I see one person with a okay, there doesn't seem to be any interest in asking questions about that. We'll go on to Article Seven. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane by taxation raise the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five, thirty-five dollars for the annual excavator lease payment? Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? It looks like Breeze Verdant would like to speak. So Bree, you'll get an invitation from BCTV? There you go.
Actually, I, his partner, what, what
Could you please, could you please introduce yourself and say what name, what the name of the street you live on?
Annie Lannenberg, Dover Road.
Thank you.
What is that? The annual excavator lease, I don't
So you'd like to know that, Mike, or is that, Mike, you can hand up?
Yeah.
Mike Fitzpatrick.
It's a machine that we've had now for about two years. It's the excavator they use for doing ditches and it actually has a brush hog on it for helping to cut back the brush along the road. And it was asked by Cat, we have a finance thing, Caterpillar, where we lease it to for 10 years. And the intent, the end of 10 years, we own it. And that is the rental payment. It's paid every, every year. And it was supposed to put in the article, the first year we had it. It didn't get put in, so we put it in this year. So it's either the town votes to approve it and we keep the excavator or if not, it goes back in June, end of June, right? But the town uses it quite a lot and everybody's using it for ditching and and a lot of different things around town. They're pretty, you know, they're pretty handy tools. But that's what it is. That's how it's being purchased instead of going out and borrowing three hundred thousand to buy it all at one time. It's been financed over 10 years through Caterpillar as a lease.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? So
I believe this will be our third payment too.
All right, I think we'll move on to Article Eight. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane approve the transfer of surplus funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the capital reserve fund? Are there any questions about this? It would seem not. So now we're at Articles nine through thirty-five, which are for special appropriations. And the, the total of them is thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three. We will go on to Article Nine. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of five hundred dollars to the American Red Cross? And you can find the information about this on page one thirteen in your town report. Does anyone have a question or comment about this, about Article Nine? All right, Article Ten then. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty dollars to the AIDS project of Southern Vermont? And the information of that is on page one fourteen. So you can use the raise hand function under reactions or participants. And if you're joining by phone, star nine will raise or lower your hand. Article Eleven. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of three hundred dollars to the Brattleboro area hospice? You have comments or questions, please use the raise hand function or star nine. Moving on to Article Twelve. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of nineteen hundred dollars to early education services? Article Thirteen. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of thirty-five hundred dollars to Grace Cottage Hospital? I recognize Bucky Pelso.
Bucky Pelso again, Otis Lane. I don't have any question on this, but I am wondering about our procedure here. It seems that nobody is having any questions on most of the articles. I'm wondering if it, is it mandatory that you go through article by article? Or can you ask those that are in attendance to indicate which, if any, articles they have questions about?
Oh, Bucky, this is a procedural, a procedural question I didn't think to ask. I do think that I should go through them all. I can do them a little faster, but there are other questions I asked to make sure I could, I was allowed. Maybe Gloria Cristelli can help us. I recognize her.
Hi, maybe some of
Your name and street, please.
Cristelli, Upper Eager Road in the village of New Fane. And I wanted to ask some questions on the previous articles, but I just had to Google and I must have missed how to find the raised hand. So that's why I put a thumbs up at a couple of points. But I'm just wondering if others might be having that problem. So could I just
You can ask your question.
Well, I don't, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to state that others might not be doing, asking questions because they couldn't find that raised hand. So you might want to repeat that.
Well, we do, okay, the, the, to ask a question, you can raise your hand by, there's a raised hand feature. It's either under reactions or participants. And there are also several people here who are available for tech help. You can call the town office, which is three, six, five, seven, 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 two, extension six, and you'll be linked up to someone with tech help to learn how to do that.
Yeah. And my feature was you had to click on participants and then go to the bottom of the page. So the raised hand is. And so I think just respond to yours. I, I would suggest that we just go quickly through the articles because I think that's just you'd cover all bases that way.
Well, that's what I'm going to do. I might not, I'm, I might not wait so long for people to to respond. So if you think there's something coming up that you want, you should have your hand on the buzzer like Jeopardy. Okay. This is not as entertaining as in person, I have to say. Article fourteen.
Can I say one thing first?
Who's that?
Mike Fitzpatrick.
Mike Fitzpatrick, yes.
On the articles, I mean, like, why are they like this is because we had meetings, but every one of these people came in ahead of time and, you know, presented their cases for each amount of money. And everybody pretty much, I mean, you know, because everything is going on and it's being done this way, kept their money at, you know, level funded it. There wasn't very many that did raise it. And then, like I said, as we was going through it, some of the people that participated kind of wanted us to list each article. Usually it's, you know, you got the whole thing, the TEL one or whatever everybody's looking for and it's voted on as one article. This year we broke it down into each one because of, you know, not being present to build a half town meeting on it. But everybody here, each, you know, number was pretty much level funded, trying to keep it all the same. And, you know, which was good for everybody to try to do this for the budget. It was kind of hard to raise more any of these by Australian ballot. And, you know, for the most part, I mean, you wish you could give more to a lot of these organizations because they're pretty important to the town. That's why they're all listed. But every one of these people did come to the select board at our budget meetings and ask for these amounts. That's all I got to say about that part of it anyways, so.
Thank you. Very important. All right. That said, we will just continue. Article fourteen, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of four hundred dollars to Green Mountain RSVP? Article fifteen. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of a thousand dollars to Groundworks Collaborative? So this is a chance to ask questions or make comments. Articles, you get to vote on these tomorrow if you haven't already. Article sixteen, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of eighteen hundred and fifty dollars to healthcare and rehabilitation services? And if you do have questions and are too shy to ask, there's a page about, I mean, there's information, reports from each of these organizations in your town report in the between about page one hundred and thirteen and one hundred and thirty, roughly. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate a thousand, the sum of a thousand dollars to Leland and Gray Education Foundation? Article eighteen, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars to Moore Free Library? Article nineteen, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars to Restorative Community Justice of Southern Vermont? Article twenty, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to Senior Solutions? Article twenty-one, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of sixteen hundred dollars to SEFC? Article twenty-two, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to SE Veds? Article twenty-three, shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of six hundred and fifty dollars to Southern Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance? Oh, yes, I see T. Breeze Verdant has his hand up. And if I missed it earlier, just whatever question you've got, this is time to ask it.
Lannenberg, Dover Road. Can somebody tell me what that acronym is, SE Veds? That's a big chunk of money and
It's a, you'll find the report on pages one fifteen to one sixteen, but maybe somebody will answer that for her.
Okay, I'll read the report.
Great. Thank you. No other questions. Okay. Shall the voters of the town of New Fane appropriate the sum of six hundred and fifty dollars? We did that one. Did, did I do them out of order? Anyway, here's, yeah, Gloria. Gloria Cristelli?
I guess with Sevens
I'm sorry, I'm going to be stickler for the record.
Gloria Cristelli, Upper Eager Road.
Thank you.
And the Sevens, the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation doesn't appear to, and I think it's a very, very important organization. It doesn't appear to profit New Fane a whole lot. And through its years, because I worked with that when I was town clerk, and through its years, it really hasn't, you know, kind of plunked much money down into, into New Fane. So I think we should keep our eyes on that one and find out, you know. It, it's quite often, and it's true with everything that happens with New Fane is we're up the West River Valley. And that's the same thing with our West River Valley mutual aid. We're kind of ignored quite a bit from the Brattleboro area. So anyway, if people are interested in just tracking that, I think that would be good.
I could say hello, I could say hello someone, so Mike Fitzpatrick.
Sure, Mike. Gloria, if you would mute yourself now?
They do come to the town every year. And when they first come to the town, I was a little skeptical on it too, because they were talking to using a lot of the college kids. You know, they go around and try to place college kids into a lot of jobs locally, different places. Like WW benefited from some of the kids that, people that was placed there. And then there's a couple other in town. But they actually do a lot with the high schools too, and they're doing quite a lot with Leland and Gray. And that was one of the things I suggested the first year they're here that, you know, they're leaving out the high school kids. And a lot of kids aren't going to college. And this was a good opportunity for these people to come in and work with our high school kids. And they've been the last two years or so, they have been, or three years, they've been going to Leland and Gray and they're doing quite a lot with them. And they're starting to look at the seniors and a lot of the other kids. And it, so I think that, you know, they've been asking for this money. And I do believe they are doing quite a lot more in the community now. And we all felt that it was a pretty good organization. And like I said, there's a couple of different people from New Fane. One of them, I don't think has a business in New Fane, but he, they lived here. And they all had some pretty good things to say about it.
Thank you, Mike. Shelley Huber?
Yeah, Shelley Huber, select board
Uh, yeah, Shelley Huber, uh, Select Board. So I believe Alex Beck um is here. And he is a um, from the BDCC. And I would welcome him to speak to the question regarding uh, the request for SEVeds. But Michael did explain um, the overall uh, understanding of the majority of the funding is going to support apprenticeships with local um, business owners. And uh, really uh, support that effort here in our community.
Thank you. And the chair recognizes Alex Beck.
Hi, everyone. Um, thanks for calling on me and recognizing us. You know, I think um, I couldn't have said it better myself in terms of the relationship we've tried to forge with Newfane over the years. And we really have invested a lot in um, our relationships at Leland and Gray and working with um, students there. We have our program now, we're calling Senior Survival, which is what every senior needs to survive after high school. Um, so it is talking about jobs in our area and beyond, and all of those skill building opportunities, mock interviews, virtual tours of employers, you know, uh, later this year. So um, that's what we've been doing in the high school. And for better or for worse, this year, we've also um been, you know, in the front lines of providing a lot of the COVID relief for businesses um, impacted um, negatively by, by COVID. So um, you know, it's unfortunate that we're good at disaster relief because it's not something we ever want to be doing. Um, but in your town report, you can see some of the information around um, the number of businesses that we engaged with um, in helping them navigate the really complicated state and federal programs. And we also know that Wyndham County as a region um, had a higher instance of folks getting grants and um, and loans to the federal government. So we like to think that because um, we're, we're available to anyone in the region that we helped boost those numbers a bit as well. But yeah, we're always looking for better ways to support Newfane. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? On uh, about Article twenty-two? I'll give Article, oh, did someone? Okay, Article twenty-three is shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $650 to the Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance? Questions or comments? Article twenty-four, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,000 for the South Newfane Community Association? You can read about that on page one thirty-four. Article twenty-five, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Gathering Place? It's page one nineteen, if you're curious. Then Gloria Cristelli? Chair recognizes Gloria.
Yeah, I have to wait until I'm invited in, so.
Right.
Why I do, Gloria Cristelli, Upper Eager Road. And when I look at, we're giving 2,000 to the South Newfane old schoolhouse, and we're giving only a thousand to the gathering. If you look at the statistics, the ga, the gathering has just done a tremendous amount of work for Newfane, and a thousand is really just pittance compared to everything that they do. I think they've invested well over $10,000 into Newfane residents. So anyway, I'd like to see that um, get more money at some point.
But um this year is not happening, yeah.
No, no, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm really keen on that one.
Thank you. And uh, Shelley Huber, our Select Board Vice Chair?
Uh, yes, as a reminder for everyone, um, when we had our um organizations coming in, making requests, we had them on the um, BCTV tape. So everyone that you would um if you don't find the information in the town report, you can go back and look at the videos. Uh, but they did um, come to the meeting, viva um, what we're doing today. So in person, and they explained and answered questions um, that were posed by the Select Board. Just an FYI.
Also, can I add something?
Sure. Uh, Marian Dowling?
Yeah.
Chair?
What uh, Shelley and Mike were saying is very important to understand. And also for everyone to understand that the amounts of money that we approved for them are the amount of money that those organizations asked for. That's what they asked for, and that's what we approved to go on the articles for voting tomorrow. We did not make up the amounts of money for each organization. We followed their requests.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, Article twenty-six, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $750 to the mover, formerly the current? Article twenty-seven. Uh, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Timson Hill Preschool? Article twenty-eight. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $2,675 to Valley Cares? Article twenty-nine, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $100 to the Vermont Greenup? Article thirty, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $4,500 to Visiting Nurses Alliance and Hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire? Article thirty-one. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Williamsville School Preservation Society? Not a talkative bunch. Okay, Article thirty-two, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $250 to Wyndham County Historical Society? Uh, do you have questions about? Article thirty-three, shall the town of voters, shall, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $720 to Wyndham County Humane Society? Are there any questions about Article thirty-four, shall the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,000 to the Women's Freedom Center? And Article thirty-five, shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $1,660 to Youth Services? And that brings an end to the special appropriations, which you will have a chance to vote on individually um, on the paper ballot. Article thirty-six, shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the New Brook Volunteer Fire Association Station One? Building and land, 1.6 acres more or less for a period of five years pursuant to thirty-two VSA thirty-eight forty? Are there any questions about this? And the next three articles are, are similar. They come up every five years. And Article thirty-seven is to exempt from taxation all real property of the New Brook Volunteer Fire Association Station Number Two, which is the building and land about a quarter of an acre for a period of five years pursuant to the same Vermont statute. And then we have it for the South Newfane Community Association Building and Land, which is about a half acre for a period of five years pursuant to the same Vermont statute. And finally, uh, in the same vein, shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property for the Williamsville School Preservation Society? Building and land about a half acre for a period of five years pursuant to thirty-two VSA thirty-eight thirty-two. Parenthesis seven. All right. So uh, Shelley, uh, what, you have the, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to um, make note of our Article thirty-seven and Article thirty-eight. And just um uh, to note specifically the South Newfane can uh, whoops, I'm sorry, wrong one, thirty-six and thirty-seven. That there's the Volunteer Fire Association, and then there's the new New Brook Volunteer Fire Association Station Two. So there's Station One and Station Two now. And um, if anyone had any questions, that Station Two is now located in um, I believe that's the one that's over in Williamsville. And I think Jay's here, so if anyone wanted to speak to that at all.
We have someone hand up. Uh, I can't talk to her to find out if that's what she wants to talk about. So is there anyone who, who has a question about Station Two, the former South Newfane Williamsville Fire Department that's now Station Two of the New Brook Volunteer Fire Association? So I don't hear any questions or see any, any questions. I do see another hand up, uh, Gloria Cristelli. Takes a minute for her to get online.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering from the Select Board or whoever these five years where they come up. Has the Wyndham County Historical Society ever had that same kind of a land tax benefit? Um, and is the Union Hall under that? I know that the Williamsville Hall doesn't need to be because it's a town. So I don't know if there's anybody who can address that question.
It looks like Marian's gonna take a stab at it. Marian Dowling?
Yes, um, I can only speak for the Union Hall in Newfane, and that is under the jurisdiction of the Incorporated Village of Newfane.
And do they pay taxes?
Yeah, Angela's a treasurer, or she was. Angela, can you answer that, please?
I think you're still muted.
Trying, sorry about that.
There you go.
No, I don't, we don't pay taxes on that land.
Okay, good. But nobody knows about the Historical Society.
If there's someone from the Historical Society, who, or who knows? You raise your hand, please. Uh, I see a raised hand, Doris Knatchel, I think. Doris? Is that? You'll tell us who, which Doris you are.
Um.
Doris, what street do you live on?
Parrish Hill Road.
Thank you.
Uh, sorry about that. Um, Historical Society is tax exempt.
Thank you.
It doesn't need to be voted on every five years.
Oh, okay.
There are different um, laws that govern the things that are um tax exempt, and then the five-year thing is it comes under a different law and category.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we can lower all hands. Oh, no, there's another hand up. No, there's a, I'm sorry. We're ready to move on. Uh, but we finished all the articles, so I'm wondering why everybody's here. Does um, if you've got something you want to say, please raise your hand. And we've got T. Breeze Verdant again?
Annie Landenberger Dover Road, can, I know it's been a wacky year, but can anybody give an update on the Stone Bridge uh, restoration?
Do you want to be more specific about the Stone Bridge? I don't know which one you're talking about.
The Arch Bridge, the Stone.
Oh, the Arch Bridge.
That is supposed to have been restored, I think, in twenty-two, who knows what the last date was? But anybody know an update on that?
Uh, I bet Jay, Jay Wilson might know something.
Two thousand and twenty.
Christopher.
Jay, you might be frozen.
Deborah Christopher can answer.
Oh, no, he just started moving. He started moving.
So the bridge was supposed to go out to bid this winter. And they couldn't um and all the, the components weren't ready to go out to bid, so now they're gonna go out to bid this summer for two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments? So um if you could find your, your applaud or your thumbs up reaction, there are um outgoing Select Board members, Marian Dowling, I know, is not running for reelection, and she has served the town for quite a long time. And um, and then there are the people who are staying on, who deserve a good hand or a thumbs up for, for serving us. And then we've got here, just here um, today. Oh, I'm not gonna get everybody, so I'm not gonna try it. There are a lot of people who are here today who work on our, our behalf for the town. And there are the people from BCTV who have made this scintillating conversation possible. So
Deborah?
Yeah.
Deborah, Christopher Williams is also.
Is Chris, Chris? Not, thank you so much, Chris. For years and years, Chris has served as Select Board, but I believe Chris, Christopher, will you still be the road foreman?
Road Commissioner.
Road Commissioner.
Yeah, yes, if I voted in to do it.
All right.
Right.
So um it doesn't matter what road I walk on or what time of day I walk, I always see Christopher on my walks. So uh, is there any other conversation, anyone else who would like to um, acknowledge someone in town government for the work they do, or some, someone who's volunteered?
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to just say this, Mike Fitzpatrick, that um it's been a real pleasure to work with Marian and Christopher. And um, they both do a good job, they take it real serious. They, they, they're here for the town. You know, you know, we all have troubles once in a while with whatever we do. And um, I'm sure they they did this job for the money. But other than, you know, it's uh I, you know, it's been a real pleasure. Yeah, hate to see him go.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much.
And T. Breeze Verdant?
What's that?
Uh, I'm recognizing someone who wants to speak.
It is T. Breeze Verdant this time, fifty-four Dover, oh, no numbers, Dover Road. Um I do, I would like to acknowledge Jay as the head of the Highway Department, I believe, for his efforts in Williamsville at painting the stencils in the road by as um putting in the thirteen, the pedestrians, uh, you know, thirteen hundred feet pedestrians that where the signs are and the speed reader. I don't think they're really slowing folks down. I guess that there was some other uh means of measuring like it done in the past, it might be differently. might be differently. I'd still say we need a speed table there, but I really genuinely am saying thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Terrific, thank you. And Bill Gunther? So.
Bill may have to.
Yeah. So, so Bill, if you are, if first Nolan has to invite Bill Gunther, Billy G. Bill Gunther, to start his video. And, or if he's coming in through telephone, you can use star six. And if you don't want to talk, if you've changed your mind or gotten shy, you can hit star six and your hand will go down.
So Billy, he is unmuted. I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah. Where, alas. Let me into technical difficulties, Bill. Do you? Oh, is he trying to talk? Bill, if you are on a telephone, it's star six, and maybe you need to turn up the volume on your phone, and if you are on another device, you could unmute and accept the invitation from BCTV. It'll show up as a small pop-up window on your screen if you're doing it that way. And because we're having some technical difficulties, Bill, if it's possible for you to chat, someone will read your chat and try to get you on. We'll get one of our tech people to help you. Hmm. Oh, we were doing so well, but we have hit technical difficulties. Well.
Yeah, I have, I've messaged Billy, I'm not getting any response from him. His mic is on, but there's no mic level.
Yeah.
I would suggest moving on.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Nolan. That's our director directing me. And so now I'll recognize Gloria Costelli.
I was just going to suggest that I call Bill. So I have my phone, and I'll just call him and see if he speaks on the phone.
We can try it.
But if he's on his own phone, he won't. But he looked like he was on a computer. Yeah, it's busy.
All right. Does anybody have anything else they want to say? Yeah, Angela. Select Board member.
I would just like to echo what Mike said about working with Marion and Christopher. It's been a great pleasure serving with them on the Select Board, and they will be missed.
Thank you. We'll miss you too.
Well, that's a cue, if I ever heard it, to tell people that Select Board meetings are usually more interesting than this, and everybody is welcome. And during this time of COVID, these meetings are all available through Zoom. They're all held by video conference. So for those who have more, want to know more about how town government actually is conducted, this is your chance. And we'll try, we will try Bill Gunther again. And. I'm wondering if maybe one of our tech help people could try calling or if they have an email for Bill, if they could contact him and let him know that there is tech help available? And maybe he can hear me, there's tech help available by calling the Town Hall at 3657772 extension six, and we can connect you to someone who might be able to help you be heard. So Nolan, are you getting any? Is Bill connected but not?
Again, his mic is not muted, but I'm not getting any mic level from him. He's not responding to my chats.
Oh. Oh, this is so unfortunate. I'm wondering if, this is, could be any number of problems, but I'm wondering if Jane Douglas would like to tell the people who are here about her role on the Communications District, the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District, and what's happening there? Jane, am I putting you on the spot too much? You can always say no. But if you, if you're willing to say something, give us a sign. There you are.
Gee, put me on the spot.
Right, so tell everybody your name and where you, what road you live on, please.
Jane Douglas, the Dover Road in South New Fane. I'm the representative from the town of New Fane to the Deerfield Valley Communications Union District, which is the broadband project for Wyndham County. Plus, we've just added quite a number of towns that are not in Wyndham County, so it's growing by the week. We're trying to get everyone who does not have internet connection connected to the internet, which is, you know, I'm talking to everybody who's connected to the internet, but if you know some people who don't have an internet connection and would be interested in helping us, we're always looking for more technical help, people who are working good at grant writing, who have worked in the communications industry in the past. There are now about 55 of us totally on the board, and no one is getting paid. It is all volunteer. We're currently starting to look into getting bids from vendors to wire up some of the towns in the district, starting with the ones that have absolutely no connection to the cable or anything right now. So hopefully we'll be getting going on those this year. Unfortunately, New Fane, we're probably going to be down near the end of the list, so it may be a couple of years before we get done. But about 30% of the town of New Fane is not connected to any wire. So that will be done, hopefully, in the next few years. So if you have any interest in it, get in touch with me.
Thank you, and thank you for serving on that board.
Hey, Deborah, I have Billy.
Okay.
I think. So he's also attending as 4252.
Oh, this is it, 4252? So I recognize, hi!
Hello, Bill Gunther here.
And what road do you live on? I can hear you, yes, I feel like Horton hears the hoot.
I'm up on Bench Mountain.
Thank you.
Yes, well, under sort of other business, I just wanted to send a huge thank you to the road crew. I'm up on Bench Mountain. I just sent a chat thing, but you may not have gotten it, but I just wanted to say they do a great job on the roads, and I think I'm the only person up here on the mountain that's only had four-wheel drive for 33, excuse me, two-wheel drive, not four-wheel, two-wheel drive for 33 years, and I get home pretty much every night. So major kudos to Jay and the crew.
Well, thank you for persevering to get through and say that.
Yes, they, they're my lifeline, literally, up here, so I really appreciate it. They do a great job, and when I visit my lady friend over to Dummerston, I look at their roads and I go, oh my God, they're not in the same shape. So Jay, if you're still on, thank you so much, and you and the guys, you do a great job up here.
All right, thank you, Bill. And he's, I don't, you probably can't see this, but he's just giving you a thumbs up, acknowledging your thanks. All right, and Gloria Costelli has her hand up?
Gloria Costelli, Upper Eager Road, and I wouldn't blame anybody for thinking that I'm talking too much, but my involvement also, and I want to tag on what Jane Douglas was talking about, if we have 30% of our people who in New Fane who are not connected to the internet, then we have a communication problem, and I'm particularly concerned with getting in touch with them through the West River Valley Mutual Aid. We have a pamphlet that we want to get out that gives the access to food. We post every week on Front Porch Forum that the Everyone Eats program is going on, that they can go down into Rattleboro Monday through Thursday and get meals, anybody who's affected by COVID. But what good does that do when they don't have the internet? So we sent out only one postcard, and that was just the really beginning stages. So if anybody has a suggestion or would like to join in a working group and work with me on the distribution and how to get it out to people who don't have the internet, for them to realize that there's a lot of good resources available, fuel assistance to Vegivano, to other things, and they can be delivered to them rather than them having to go out and get them. So any suggestions would be very helpful from the town.
Thank you for that information. And the chair recognizes Erica Walsh, who has generously donated her time tonight to help with techs.
Hi, I just wanted to second what Bill said about the road crew. I also live, Erica Walsh, Hobbie Hill Road. I live on a long dirt road, and there are people beyond me, so I'm not the end of the line, but they do such a great job, and I really, really, really appreciate the great work that they do. I also have, you know, had the pleasure to drive around some of our neighboring towns, and not to be judgy, but we have the best road crew, and our roads are so much better than Dummerston and Putney.
Thank you. Thank you. And where's Jay? Did you hear that, Jay? And he did, very good. Are there any other comments of any kind? And Breeze for Dant? Or Annie Lannenberg, whoever's gonna?
It's Breeze at Dover Road. I also, I've called the garage to say thank you, and I recognize the same thing with the roads, but I want to echo what you said earlier, Deb, because I walk all the time, and Chris Williams knows, he goes walking by us a lot. But I've figured out on my own, he goes driving by us as we're walking, and I just figured this guy must just drive these roads unceasingly just to monitor the roads, because everywhere I go, especially in the winter, you're walking, 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 there's Chris. So I just really wanted to acknowledge you too, Chris, because you're obviously really out there keeping your eye out. So thank you.
Thank you.
He heard you. That's good. Thank you. All right. So do they even have anything else to say? We'll keep doing this till someone suggests we adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And so it's a non-debatable item, and we actually can't vote, but it's a Select Board meeting, so only you can vote. And is the Select Board ready to adjourn?
Usually, when somebody motions to adjourn, it doesn't even need a second.
Okay. I guess we're done.
We don't vote on it.
All right.
Thank you, Deb, for your.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and thank you so much to BCTV for, and everybody who sponsored this, as you can see. It's a huge effort, a big team effort, and we made it happen. Thank you so much.
Everybody get out and vote tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow, vote between 9:00 and 7:00 at the Newbrook Firehouse Number 1.
This could be the new trend.
I hope not.
Well.
Okay. Have a good night and be safe, everybody. There's a lot of wind here tonight.